Chancellor, Chancellor Lofton, I believe you have a statement.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to say that I am really joyful today because Jonathan Butler ended his hunger strike and is now back on food. That's a very good thing for all of us, and I want to acknowledge his extraordinary courage and leadership at doing what he did. A very tough, tough young man, a very focused young man, a very intelligent and forward-looking young man, so we owe him a lot. I have decided today that I will transition from the role of Chancellor of the University of Missouri effective the end of this year and move into a new role where I will work with many people across the university and with the system to advance our research mission at the University of Missouri. Over the last several years, thanks to the leadership of our Provost, Garnet Stokes, Hank Foley, the Senior Vice Chancellor for Research and Graduate Studies, and many others, we've made great progress in aligning this university to become the very best it can be in terms of research for a land-grant institution that continues to serve the people of Missouri as its primary educational public university, as well as as a leader in doing the kind of research that really, really impacts the people of this state, this nation, and the world. So I'm pleased to be able to move into a role where I will be working to assist the campus community in developing the kind of research facilities it needs to support our extraordinary faculty. We're blessed today with great faculty who do world-changing research each and every day. Our goal is to be able to enhance that faculty ability to do that research, as well as grow that faculty. And we're all along the process of doing that, but what we need today is great facilities to provide them the place for themselves, their students, their colleagues, to be fruitful. And so it'll be my role, in part anyway, beginning January 1 of next year. That's all. Thank you.
Is there any other business before the Board? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A move. Thank you.
Okay. Cindy, would you call the role?
Curator Covington?
Yes.
Curator Cups?
Yes.
Curator Graham?
Yes.
Curator Henrickson?
Yes.
Curator Phillips?
Yes.
Curator Snowden?
Yes.
Curator Steelman?
Yes.
Curator Stewart? Okay. All votes in favor.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned. We will commence the press conference immediately. If anyone wants to leave, I'll give a couple minutes for the room to clear, and then I have a statement, and then I will be available, and President Wolf is available to answer These have been very difficult times for the University of Missouri system, and earlier today you heard from Tim Wolf that he had decided to resign his position as the University of Missouri president. This was a very difficult decision, and is a decision that Tim Wolf made that he put the interests of the university ahead of his own personal interests. Tim Wolf was not asked to resign. Tim Wolf did this because he felt like the University of Missouri needed to heal. And speaking for what Tim told us is that he did not believe that this university could heal as long as he served as president of the university. I would like to thank Tim for his service. I would like to thank Tim for the accomplishments that he's made. He's brought great efficiencies to the university that were not there when he arrived. He has brought strategic planning to a new level at the university. All of these are accomplishments that he should be proud of. These are challenging times. I'm a Missourian. I graduated from a Missouri elementary school. I went to high school in Missouri. I came to the University of Missouri in 1974. This institution, the four campuses of this institution, are the greatest asset that the state has. For myself, the members of the Board of Curators, for Tim Wolf, for Chancellor Lofton, for others, we want to do the best thing for the university. We want the best for the students. We have a national image to protect and to enhance. We want to give everyone the opportunity to receive an education, no matter what walk of life they come from, no matter their color, no matter their minority status. Students come here with the expectation that they will have an exceptional learning experience. Parents send their children to our four campuses with that same expectation. It saddens me to learn that some have experienced discrimination and acts of hate directed towards them. We must provide a safe environment for all of our students, our faculty, our staff members, and I can assure you that the Board of Curators and the administration take that responsibility very seriously. The situations that have occurred the past few months have been eye-opening for us and has required us to look very deeply at ourselves. As Board members, we took an oath to uphold the duties and responsibilities necessary to protect this university, to protect the four campuses, to protect our students, our faculty, and our staff members. For some of our students, some of our employees, we may have failed. For that, we apologize. And we have resolved that we will attempt to do better. It's going to take a lot of work. As part of that, we will be appointing a president, a new president, an interim president as soon as possible, that, as President Wolf said, that he felt like we couldn't heal as long as he was there. Chancellor Lofton has announced that he will transition January 1 to a passion of his to lead research actions on the MU campus. I would like to thank both of them for their service. The problems that we've experienced cannot be blamed on President Wolf. It can't be blamed on Chancellor Lofton. It's got to be blamed on all of us. It's the fellow students that say things that they shouldn't or do things they shouldn't. It's faculty, staff, employees that do not take and do not do what they should do. We all have, as Board members, we have to examine ourselves. The administration at the four campuses, they have to examine theirselves to ensure that what we are doing is the right thing, that we're treating everyone as we would wish to be treated. We are announcing, and you will receive a press release this, in a few minutes. There are a number of items that we are announcing. I will briefly go through them, but I may not give you an inclusive, fully inclusive But the one thing that I will tell you is the Board of Curators will not tolerate hateful activities on our campuses, period. We will not. Today, the Board is announcing a series of initiatives which include a first-ever Chief Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Officer will be appointed for the University of Missouri system, with accountability and metrics that will be established for the position going forward. There will be a full review initiated of all University of Missouri system policies as they relate to staff and student conduct. And let me assure you that there will be conduct that will be unacceptable and will not be tolerated. Additional support will be provided for students, faculty, and staff who have experienced discrimination and disparate treatment. Additional support will be provided for hiring and retention of diverse faculty and staff at all of our four campuses. We will create a Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Task Force to develop both long- and short-term strategies, plans, and metrics for the University of Missouri system, with campus-based task forces to develop diversity, inclusion, and equity strategies. We will ensure that each campus of the University of Missouri system has a Chief Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Officer that is reporting to the Chancellor of that campus. We will launch a program of education that will include members of the Board of Curators, the President, administrative leadership, followed by broader faculty and staff training, specifically on the MU campus, which has been the subject of much of the publicity. There is now in process, a process in place to obtain external diversity, inclusion, and equity consultants. In fact, the interview processes are, the interview process is being done either if it's not already taking place within the next week. There, the Chancellor Lofton has already implemented mandatory diversity, inclusion, and equity training for all faculty, staff, and future incoming students. And we will continue to, the comprehensive review of the student mental health services to ensure that students, that our students are referred to the most appropriate resources for their needs. We aren't going to solve this problem overnight. What we are going to do, though, is we are going to move forward in the future, and we're going to solve some of these problems, if not all of these problems, in the future. We cannot change the hearts of individuals, but hopefully we can educate those individuals so that they will change their own hearts. And if the University of Missouri can do that, then we've accomplished one of our great purposes. Thank you. We will take questions, both President Wolf and myself. I don't.
Some of the members of Concerned Students, 1950, who said that they wanted to meet with you and with the University of Missouri faculty council, do you think it would be more effective as soon as possible? Do you plan to meet with those of your people?
I've just been concentrating on getting through today. This, as you know, the university system is made up of campuses, and we go through campuses and then up to the Board of Curators through the university system. I believe the Board of Curators is more than willing to meet with any individuals, any groups, at the appropriate times and places, and I would suggest that as soon as it would be scheduled, we would meet with anyone that wants to have a meaningful discussion.
You mentioned that we had an image to set in effect. Can you talk about several levels? How, can you talk about how the potential of recruiting money and also the potential of already recruiting both of black athletes and black students in large, how much that plays into the thought of the setting of what should happen?
It didn't come up. We're.
So, so, so recruiting of black students?
No, no.
And would you imagine that would affect the.
No, sir. The, I think the question that you asked me was the losing of money and the losing of students. The discussion, I think, was are there inappropriate acts that are taking place? And if, and there are inappropriate acts taking place, and trying to find solutions to prevent them from happening in the future.
Were they also concerned that this would encourage those to get black students to come to this university, either asking for it or considering it?
That was never discussed. I am, and I'm, I think I'm speaking for the Board here, we're concerned for all of our students, and we're concerned that our campuses are a place that is inviting and safe for everyone. And, you know, the color, the economics, the other minority statuses, we want the University of Missouri to be a place where everyone comes, they feel welcome, they feel safe, and they have the opportunity to move forward and to succeed in life.
Mr. Wolf, can you specify my resignation effect? Is that a possibility?
Yes, I can. My resignation is effective today. We are working together with the Board to find an interim as soon as possible.
Is there a specific timeline that it has to be possible?
As soon as possible. That's, we're really, we're in conversation. There's no more specific date than that, just as soon as possible.
How much of that goes with actions that will help you in terms of, like, playing out events to the comments? I would ask if you'd like that.
None.
Not at all?
Then, were you going to do it by any way, or did that happen?
Yes, we were, I was considering all the implications of what was happening on our campus. Again, this decision was out of love. I mean, I love this place. I grew up in the town, went to this university. Unfortunately, this university is in pain right now. It's in disarray, and it pains me, and it just didn't happen in the last couple days. It's been progressive, and I talked this morning about the degree of this, and it needs healing. And the first step in healing was my resignation, which was the right thing to do.
Mr. Wolf, can you do differently?
Is there anything I would have done differently? Oh, sure, you can always play Monday morning quarterback. What we've got to do as a family is focus on the future. We can't change the past, and that's what we together have to figure out how to do. We have to be better listeners. We have to learn. We have to care, and we have to have more respect for each other and stop yelling at each other so we can work together on common solutions. That's what my focus is, and in terms of finding the right interim, is that interim has to bring the community together and focus on how we can improve today and how we can improve in the future and not spend time on the past.
Mr. Wolf, President Lacy played with you on Saturday. Have you, did you hear from other elected officials in kind of one post at all, just did their message play on you?
I did hear from Lacy. Had a great conversation. It was in respect to Jonathan's health, Jonathan Butler's health. I had been talking to his dad, Eric, multiple times. I got the good fortune to meet Eric in person today. We hugged. It was a tremendous relief that Jonathan is now safe. Lacy was calling concerned, as I was, as obviously Eric was, with the health of Jonathan, and we talked through it, and I gave him an update of what we were doing.
Did you talk to other elected, did the governor call you specifically, and did other elected officials?
Other elected, other elected officials have called. I just talked to Lacy.
What are the benefits or severance that you're aware of?
Benefits or severance? There isn't any benefits or severance that I'm aware of. Have I missed something?
Or the financial terms of your.
I, I have not talked about that to the Board. I, what we need to do, what I need to do, and again, as Chairman Cups said, I couldn't have asked for better partners and colleagues and conversation. I had great advice from the Board. I suggested to them that the healing starts with me resigning, and many of them said that's not the right thing to do, but they finally, not finally, we just, we just agreed that this is the first step, so there hasn't been any conversations about any changes financially.
You said that football teams decision to not play had no effect on your decision. Was there a moment to you, or was it a bill? Can you tell us, like, when you came to the, was it this morning you woke up and said, this is it? I mean, can you tell us, like, that's what you said?
There has been multiple conversations since homecoming with leaders on the MU campus, leaders in the community, conversations with Concerned Students 1950, and others. And I've had conversations with other students, other faculty, community leaders, donors. What was starting to become clear was the frustration and anger was evident, and there was something that needed to be done that was immediate and substantial for us to heal. And so it was a progression that I went through in multiple conversations and prayer.
When did you first offer to resign?
When did I first offer to resign? Yesterday was when I came to that conclusion. I was there. I talked a lot with my wife and others and reached that conclusion and gave that to Chairman Cups and some other Board members.
So you were considering the football players. So when did you first start getting involved in my mind?
Well, it was, it was the gradual conversations that I had that there was something that was systemically wrong on this campus, and obviously I was identified as the reason. As I said, I accept that the anger and frustration was there on our campus, and as a leader, you have to take responsibility for it, all the bad and all the good, and I took responsibility for it, and I felt the best thing to do was resign.
You say your resignation, you hope it leads to healing. Are you too hot politically now to, would you like to be a part of the future and to dream of it better?
Well, it is about the future, and it is about healing. I would like to be a part of it as long as it makes sense. I do need to pass the leadership to the interim president. If that interim president decides to engage me or help in these conversations, I'm all ears. Understand, again, this is the state I love. I grew up here, went to school here, I came back for a purpose. I want this state to go forward. I want this institution to go forward, and anything I can do to help the interim president or the next president or anybody else, I'm here to help.
You've all seen some of the work you did with Lofton. Were you concerned about the financial implications if you stay on? Financial implications for your career?
Again, you have to do what's right. I believe the best leaders do what's right, and they stay true to their morals, their principles, and true to the mission of the institution that they serve. And financials is kind of secondary to that, and so that's what guided me in my decision, was the mission of the University of Missouri system, the values that we stand for, the principles, how I'm made up as an individual, and that's what allowed me to reach this decision.
Recognizing that this nominee just came today, what are you looking for?
What am I looking for?
After I'm no longer president? That's a great question.
Reflection, quality time with my family, a lot of good books, a little fishing, a little golf, a little hunting. I mean, there's, I have more passions than I have time in the day. Oh, I forgot, spending time with my lovely wife. I should, I should have started with that. But, you know, that's a great question. I haven't given it a lot of time, so that's kind of off the top of my head. When I have time to think about that would be things I'll be doing next.
You felt pushed forward a kind of way, and you said that, that you're alive and you still have, um, you're kind of, you know, about, you know, you're looking forward.
Well, I'm proud of a lot. I'm proud of what's happened in my three-plus years of leadership. We have the most students in the history of the University of Missouri system. We have the best students, as defined by their ACT scores, the best students in terms of defined by the diversity that they represent. We have much to be proud of. There's wonderful things that continue to happen on this campus. We had all-time highs in funding by partnering with our leadership down in Jefferson City last year, all-time highs in 30 years. So there's been much progress made in the last three and a half years. You obviously mentioned the great progress that we've made with Title IX, sexual assault and sexual harassment. Unfortunately, it took a bit of a crisis to get focused on that, but what I understand when my peers come and talk to me is we're an exemplar. We're a national model relative to what we did there. I believe we should have an aspirational goal to be the national model in terms of inclusive diversity and having an environment where regardless, like Curator Cups said, regardless of where you come from or the color of your skin, this is a welcoming place, and the opportunity for you to have success while you're here is the same for all students.
We're going to pass a speech event. What types of messages at the conference would you prefer from the one I presented?
A lot of messages. The majority of them, the vast majority, is those of support. I have the good fortune, growing up in the state of Missouri and being in this role for three and a half years, to have a lot of great friends, and they reached out with support. They reached out with, how can I help? It's challenging, and the amount of responses based on the announcement this morning, again, is unbelievable. And I've said on numerous occasions, this is my choice, this is the right choice, we have to come together, we can't be angry anymore. We have to come together and figure out how to channel our energies towards the future, not the past. Channel our energies towards positive healing and. Channel our energies towards positive healing and how we can collectively go forward as a community and make this great University of Missouri system a better place.